Good evening and welcome to the February 12th regular city council meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here. Now I'll turn it over to Councilmember Doer. The pledge.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for all of your daily provisions. We have much to be thankful for in Beaver Creek in 2024. May we never take what we have for granted. May we always turn back to you to say thank you for the blessings you have bestowed upon us. I pray that you will grant this council and all who work for the city wisdom and guidance as we deliberate on the issues set before us. May we put the community first and under Romans 13:4 be servants for the good of the people. In Jesus' name, amen.
We have an agenda before us this evening. Are there any changes or additions?
We approve the agenda, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's approved. And we have some minutes before us. January 8th regular meeting. Any changes, additions?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second for the January 8th regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. We have the January 16th, 2024 work session minutes.
Move to approve January 16th work session minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the January 16th work session minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we have the January 22nd, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Additions or changes there?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Prescheduled speaker time. Chief Heaster.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to join you this evening. I'm Nathan Heaster, Division Chief with Beaver Creek Township Fire Department, but I'm also your county's 911 coordinator. And so tonight, we're talking about Next Gen 911. The importance of that is we have a plan that's due to the state by April 3rd of this year. So that's prompting us to try to get a bunch of things together very quickly. And we wanted to take the opportunity to kind of give you a little bit of a primer before that plan comes before you for a vote for either approval for adoption or disagreement with. So Mr. Landrum is on the 911 Oversight Commission for Green County, and so he's well versed in that. But I wanted to take you through kind of a little bit of background information for you so that I can answer any questions hopefully ahead of time for you. So with that, I wanted to jump into a couple of pieces of information for you. July 3rd of 2023, Governor Dewine signed into law House Bill Number 33. That provided the funding to upgrade the 911 operations in the state of Ohio. That was a culmination of an over 10-year effort with significant traction over the last five and six years in the state of Ohio at the state level with lots of local partnerships. That law will put into play $46 million in state funding over the course of a two-year build-out, which includes some pilot programs which are already up and running in other parts of the state. And that will help Public Safety Answering Points, or 911 Centers, with the non-recurring cost of the last mile for that connection to this Next Gen 911 platform. The state cooperative purchasing agreements are also available for pre-approved items. So what that basically points out is that the state has done a bunch of work to put as many items for Next Gen 911 systems available for cooperative purchasing to hopefully get the lowest price to help offset the work that your staff would have to do for any upgrades that they may need to do in the future. So purchasing off a state-term schedule basically is the goal of that. So with that, when the law passed, we saw a 911 rate increase from 25 cents per phone line per month to 40 cents per phone line per month. The goal of that was to provide the necessary funding for Next Gen 911. And so kind of a high-level overview of that change, previous to that bill, 97% of the 25 cents that was charged went directly to the 911 Government Assistance Fund. Then that was distributed through the different metrics throughout the state of Ohio for 911 dollars. A lot of those came here to the city of Beaver Creek. After the bill, 72% of the 40 cents is going to that same fund with the goal that that fund stays at the status quo of where it is today. But they've created a new fund that is the Next Gen 911 Fund, which receives 25% of the 40 cents. So they want to maintain status quo we were getting before, and then they're going to add to that in a separate fund specifically dedicated to build out the Next Gen 911 platform within the state. So those dollars will then be redistributed down through the 911 Commission to the 911 centers within the county, which is why the need for the county plan, so that they know where those dollars are going to be spent. In addition to that, the law should provide for 1% of the 40 cents to go to the Tax Commissioner for collection of those funds and 2% of the 40 cents to go to the 911 Program Fund or the 911 Steering Committee. So that's the state level. So they're receiving a total of 3% of those dollars. So that's the breakdown of the changes in 911 funding for you. So with that law, Public Safety Answering Points, or PSAPS, must meet the requirements of ORC Chapter 128 within two years. Luckily, Beaver Creek is already almost there, if not already there. Greg's been great to work with, and he's actually the first one to provide me with a draft plan for the city of Beaver Creek as they plan to move forward. We're still combing through Fairborn and Xenia's plans to culminate into one county plan, but Beaver Creek is already well ahead of everybody else to get where we need to be. The creation of a county 911 review committee, which Mr. Landrum already sits on, along with several other representatives across the county. We've met twice now. We have another meeting coming up. The goal at the next meeting is to actually have a draft plan for that committee to review, and then hopefully we can get that to you for a vote after that. The county final plan is due to the state April 3rd of 2024. So we're working with a tight timeline. As we roll that draft plan out to all of the jurisdictions, they have 60 days to vote on that plan. So obviously with that April 3rd date, we are really pushing that envelope a little bit. I took over the county 911 coordinator role in December. It's been trying to get my feet under me. We did not have a plan in place up to that point. Beaver Creek luckily already had some things in motion, and I believe Fairborn has some things in motion as well. So we're in good shape, but we're a little bit behind the paperwork to get that squared away and documented. So the goal, or for that April 3rd deadline, 60% of the populace, the jurisdictions that represent those, have to pass the plan for us to be able to submit that to the state by April 3rd. So that's where we're working with that timeline. So I'll be going around to all of the local jurisdictions to answer questions that they may have. As I do that, I know that the plan will be drafted and in place at a point in time for that, but the goal is to try and get out ahead of it as much as possible. Changes to final plans can be filed, so even though we have a plan in place, we don't have to stick to that. If we find a change that needs to be made for any of the 911 centers across the county, we can file a plan, an amendment to that plan within 90 days, and that's allowable under the Ohio Revise Code and remaining compliance. Financial reports for accountability are also due to the state at the county level annually in March for all the 911 fund expenditures as we move forward. So your dispatch center sends those to me. We compile those with the other two centers from the state and file them appropriately. So that's how they kind of make sure that we are spending the money as we are supposed to, as those get dispersed. So with that, kind of a little bit of the why, the current enhanced 911 limitations, that system is voice-centric, so it was built around analog phone lines many years ago. It was built to support landline service, and it's been tweaked to tolerate wireless calls and voice-over-IP calls. So all of the services that provide better, cheaper phone services to all of our residents and the folks that visit Beaver Creek are affected by this. And so it's put a strain on what the 911 system is able to do. It has geographic limitations on transfers. A lot of that is hardware-based, so where things can be routed to a limited number of other places, what you'll see is how that changes with Next Gen 911 and why. There's limited policy control, so we can't give it a lot of different rules to route 911 calls to different places as we need them to. As the emergency services business is ever evolving, we see new things every day. Sometimes we have a need to offload some calls or reroute some calls just based on where that call is originated from or where the services are needed to go. And right now, today, that capability is fairly limited, along with limited redundancy. So the analog system today requires a lot of human intervention to make the redundant pieces work. There's some automation with it, but not a lot. And then traffic management is very static. So as your dispatchers can tell you, when it's a busy night, it's a busy night. Calls don't offload automatically somewhere else, at least very easily. And so we can see an overload of a center when we have a critical event, as we've experienced in Beaver Creek several over the last couple of years. So Next Gen 911 is a totally new 911 system that's based on data. It's based on fiber networking platforms. It's based on GIS information. It's based on fault-tolerant interconnections. So the goal with this is to move away from analog phone lines and move into a data environment where everything that exists in a 911 platform comes to us as data. That allows us to get more real-time information about the caller. It allows us to get more real-time information about how our centers are handling those things. It allows us to have spatial database for better end-call information and routing. So as people travel through Beaver Creek on I-675, they may enter Beaver Creek, but that may not have been where they started from. So the 911 call that gets placed two miles up the road from the crash that may be in another jurisdiction, this system will help us be able to better route those 911 calls where they need to go so the services can get there faster. Along with as they're traveling, it also will help us integrate other centers into those things as they're moving to make those pieces fit better for each of our dispatch centers. This is also based on a lot of GIS information, and it's critical that our local agencies partner with the state to have the best GIS information available for that. And what I'll show to that effect is kind of a map that you'll see on there. The 911 calls are provisioned, so if you see on the left, it's just got an example of some generic borders. Those are political borders or representative of political borders. But if a 911 call center's service area is different than those geopolitical borders, then we need to draw a different map so that when a device enters one of those areas, it may need to route itself to a different location. So when we're talking about data, wireless devices move all over the place. And so this is going to help us better map where a call should go in the first place to get them to the right location the first time. It's also going to allow us to adhere to the state LBRS standards, which we are already doing. All of these things are actually in existence today in our Tyler platform, so we already have the information. That's one step done for Green County. As we update that or make changes to that, it's more readily applicable. So we can pass that mapping information up, and it can be applied to the Next Gen 911 system in a lot easier fashion than rerouting 911 calls in the analog system today. That takes a couple of week process and a lot of human intervention to do. It becomes more automated in the Next Gen 911 platform. The state has contracted with a company called Comtech. They have a contract through 2035 to put in place the Next Gen 911 Core for the state of Ohio. The goal will be that we will connect to that core rather than have our own core. Obviously, the magnitude of cost is pretty significant from that perspective, but the state core will allow us to leverage and share some of those resources that we don't currently have today to share. So we can exist in an environment that is statewide. We can route information from one 911 center to another statewide, and our users will have the same interface that they have today. So the users will not see much of a change from that perspective. It'll all be behind the scenes, so allow them to be more efficient with their job. So with that said, kind of a little bit of the fault tolerance, the current enhanced 911 system is usually limited to a few options for alternate routing. So when one center goes offline, those phone lines then roll over to another center, and usually you have a couple of choices for that. In the Next Gen platform, we have virtually unlimited routing options. All the alternate routing options in Enhanced 911 are hardcoded at the selective router, meaning they're pre-programmed, and it takes somebody with a specific skill set and knowledge to go in and change. When we can go to the Next Gen 911's platform, the number of people that can help us manage that increases dramatically because it's newer technology, it's more relevant to what's in the technology market today, and those can create opportunities for dynamically managed and fully integrated with Next Gen core services. So as an example, if we wanted to, in Green County, partner with our adjacent PSAPS, we can determine where calls will go and how many calls will go to a different center. So as to not automatically say, "All Beaver Creek 911 calls will go to Xenia or to Fairborn" and overload that center, we can say, "I want you to send 35% of the 911 calls to Fairborn, and I want you to spend the other 70% to Xenia," so that we can balance that load a little bit more, so we can have different conditions on that. We can have different conditions based on their geopolitical areas, so we can draw borders in the mapping area and send this to Fairborn, this section to Huber, this section to Centerville, and this section to Xenia, if that's what we choose to do. So we have a lot of different routing and fail-safe options with Next Gen that we just don't have today to allow us to make better decisions as we plan for those emergency events that we don't encounter very often. And those changes can be made quickly and done efficiently. So with the state staff being a part of this and a contractor already lined up from the state side of it, we have a way and a mechanism to get those changes submitted and implemented in a timely fashion. So what's next for us? The goal is to get that draft plan to the 911 Oversight Committee for Green County by our meeting on the 21st. If they adopt the plan from there, we will roll that out to all the jurisdictions to have, to take a vote for that. We need that 60% populist vote to pass so that we can submit that plan. Our goal is to meet the deadline from the state. If we don't, we'll go back to the drawing board and make the changes that we need to. The city staff has already submitted their plan and have reviewed that. We're in good shape there. So now we're rolling that into the same document using the statewide template with Fairborn and Xenia's plans. So currently, no big changes or surprises from there. Once that plan is approved, we have a two-year window to implement the Next Gen 911 plan. So your staff will work alongside the vendors and the state to implement that and provide the training and make those steps as those resources become available to Green County. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone? Any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much for the presentation and the update. You mentioned the PSAP could go to Centerville, and given that Beaver Creek borders Montgomery County, this is fully integrated. So if Green County's moving forward, is Montgomery County moving forward at the same pace, timetable? Is the integration full? Because I can see people living along the periphery of our community, connects to Riverside, for example, needing some kind of assistance along those lines. Curious as to your thoughts.
So the entire state has the same timeline to move. We will see counties move at different paces based on the complexity with each county. There is a state 911 coordinator. His name is Patrick Brant. I meet with him monthly, and we get updates from every county coordinator on those monthly calls. So as everybody's plans get adopted, the state will give us a rollout through a timetable through their vendor with Comtech, so we'll be able to see how that's going to affect the borders of Green County, specifically in our case, our border with Montgomery County. And we will be mindful, just as we were with our state of Ohio Mark's transition, how those pieces fit together with one county to the next. In the Mark's transition example, Green County went about three years ahead of Montgomery County, but we had plans in place, and we even share a tower site and had the foresight to do as much as we could. We will do the same thing again with this.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I just have one question. It was in regard to the actual storage. Do we retain the storage of our information from, or is it going to transfer over to the state if Comtech is the one that's going to be kind of...
So our 911 records are accessible at our local level. The state will maintain records for the statewide core. And so there is a distinction between the two, or differentiation between the two. We would have access to records for Beaver Creek City specifically, and that's why they made plans with the 911 phone system that they've already chosen to make sure they have the resources that they need to operate effectively.
Okay. And Comtech, is that the contractor that the state is using?
Correct. That is the contractor for the statewide core, not necessarily for each local jurisdiction. So that is the one that is going to roll out the statewide data network and the core 911 phone system for the Next Gen 911 system.
Is Comtech plugged in already all over the state, or is it kind of bringing everybody onboard at the same time?
They are. In fact, they manage several statewide Next Gen 911 projects, so this is not their first, and it's definitely not their only. They are a larger company. They're a nationwide company, but they have done several already, and they have several in the pipeline in Ohio. It's one of those that they're actively working.
That's good news. Thanks, Chief.
Chief, does Yellow Springs have a PSAP?
So Yellow Springs has a dispatch center, but they currently do not take 911 calls. So they're a little bit different classification under the Ohio Revise Code.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, a question administratively.
Sure.
I went through the 9/11 conflicts in Montgomery County. They ended up with three different groups of people. Are we, how are we over here? I'm just not, I'm just curious about administratively. Is every, what, is every community keep their dispatcher, or are those dispatchers out of the picture?
So this particular plan has nothing to do with the dispatch centers that are in each jurisdiction. So currently, Green County has a 911 Public Safety Answering Point at Fairborn, city of Beaver Creek, and city of Xenia. None of that changes unless those centers decide to make a change. That would be one of the addendums that I spoke of earlier.
I see.
So if the city of Beaver Creek chose to take on additional customers, that would be a change that we would reflect in the county plan.
Okay.
So there are no changes to staff, no changes to 911 operations. These are literally how the phone calls are answered and how they're routed to the centers.
I understand. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
No. Mr. Mayor, I will say, though, as Chief said, the 21st will be the next meeting of the 911 committee. If that is approved by that board committee, then we will have it tentatively on our schedule for February 26th meeting for council's consideration. It'll be a resolution to adopt the plan. We're one of the first, are we the first or the second? We're the first to hear this, because after the committee, I'm like, "Can you make the 12?" And he's like, "Yes." So we're first, and we want to help with that 60% count. We're the largest city, so quicker us, I think, Green County. There's going to be a couple, maybe Fairborn, Beaver Creek Township as well. We're trying to get to that 60% as quickly as possible to meet the deadline. So appreciate you, Chief, taking on this responsibility. I know that's in addition to his normal duties, so all the whole county owes him a thanks for that, and his knowledge is probably second to none. So appreciate him helping us out. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Yeah, I also want to thank Greg for getting things together and getting it to you right away, being the first to do that. So good job.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. We have Ordinance 24-2.
Ordinance 24-2, an ordinance to vacate a portion of public right-of-way of cross-country drive upon application of the owners of property abutting the same right-of-way.
Good morning, Mayor, members of city council. Back in 2003, the city completed a series of improvements along the New Germany Trebine Road Corridor. One of those improvements involved the realignment of cross-country drive, where you can see in red where cross-country was previously. As part of the project, we moved it to the east so it better lined up with the opposing intersection for safety purposes. Following the completion of the project, the old road right-of-way stayed in place, but we recently received a request from the two adjoining property owners that the city consider the vacation of that old right-of-way. In evaluating this request, you know, we surely know that that road, that right-of-way hasn't been used for roadway purposes in quite some time, and we can't see any need, public need for that property. So staff recommends city council vacate that right-of-way. And I should mention, too, after the vacation, the two property owners will be required to submit some documents to the planning department. We're going to have them combine that old vacated right-of-way with the existing parcels to kind of clean things up, too. Happy to answer any questions.
This is the first reading. Are there any questions? Okay. Since this is an ordinance, we have to do public input at this time. If there's anyone out in the public that would like to comment on this, please step forward, give your name and address. Seeing none, the public portion is closed. Council, any...
Just, sorry. Did you say this, this came as a result? I didn't mean to make you come all the way back up here. Did you say this came as a result of the request of the residents, the property owners?
That's correct. Yes, we have a signed petition from the two property owners that would benefit from the vacation.
I think that's great that the city looked into this and tried to find a way to make this work for the residents that they request, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Have a motion?
With that, I would move to move Ordinance 24-2 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move it to the second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Ordinance 24-3, the second reading.
Ordinance 24-3, an ordinance amending Chapter 158 by making certain additions, deletions, and changes to various sections of the zoning code in accordance with Chapter 158.175.
Anything else from staff? Anything from council? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve Ordinance 24-3.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 24-3. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Very good. Decision item. Mr. Casero.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. You've got my detailed report. I just wanted to go over a couple of high points for the residents to let them know what's in that report. And that, just to mention that that report will be, after you approve it tonight, will be on the website, the report and all the detail behind it. So just, we're all aware of that our main source of revenue is property tax, so I just wanted to give you the overview. We got about $400,000 more than we did last year, which is about a 2.8% increase over last year. Again, a lot of confusion about that with the reappraisals and everything, but that $400,000, 2.8, obviously not even keeping up with inflation, but that's what we came in with. And so it's, that's been about our average for the last four or five years. It fluctuates around that, but again, 2.8, it wasn't the spike that everybody thought that we would receive as part of the reappraisals. That isn't going to affect us too much in 2024 also. You saw in the report that interest income spiked. Obviously, the Federal Reserve jumping up to 5.5% when we were getting almost 1/2% a couple of years ago. That helped us out, and we received about $1 million in interest revenue. That, and the hotel motel increased significantly, too. The one hotel that had fire damage reopened. And then again, we implemented the short-term rental and also started collecting hotel-motel taxes in October, and that increased over what we had previous, the previous year by about $200,000. And why that's significant is that money from the interest increase in the hotel motel, if you recall, we used that money to pay off the bond anticipation note for the research park property that we had to acquire, basically for the huge stormwater projects that we have out there. And again, just to remind you that we're using the ARP funding for the project, but there was that property we had to buy because it had a significant effect on the retention system and the program that we had implemented out there. But because we used that money, the original idea was that we were going to keep issuing those bands every year, which cost us $50,000, $60,000 just in interest alone without reissuance costs. But again, with that money, that's what we did, was we paid that off and got that squared away. So that worked out very well in 2023. The parks and golf rebounded from the previous years and had record years, basically recreation programming, senior center memberships. The golf rounds were all way up, and, you know, there was a significantly higher demand for all of those services, which is a good attribute for us. And as that demand went... And as that demand went up, we kept a pretty good control over expenditures. And in most cases, we're actually still under budget despite that high demand in those services. So and a testament to the staff here for keeping an eye on both of those items, the revenue and also maintaining those expenditures. So again, the golf, we topped 36,000 rounds, the highest that we've ever had since the city's been operating the golf course. So that was fantastic. And the other key is that we're $35,000 away from breaking even operationally. Again, doesn't include capital or anything, but just revenue and the operating expenses, we are pretty close to breaking even. So again, great compliments to the golf course staff for keeping an eye on again both things. As revenue was increasing, they didn't go crazy. They spent about 94% of their operating expenditure. So again, even on the spike in the services level, they maintained the expenditures, which is always great to see. Gasoline tax, that's another one of our major revenue sources and motor vehicle license fees. Again, we had budgeted down a little higher than we actually got in 2023 because we thought the prices might come down a little bit and that there'd be more trips. And it's a consumption tax. So again, we thought it would go up a little bit and it did and it maintained about the same as it did the previous year. So hopefully that'll turn a little bit more in 2024. The PD, one of the key elements there was that we were able to get back and restore our SRO program. Again, we have two full-time SROs out there and then the dare officer also is out there to support them. So everything was fully staffed for the school year, which was a major accomplishment. And then again, we tried to slowly get back to our 50 sworn officers during the year and they did a pretty good job getting that all back up and running with the shortages that we had due to retirements and lateral transfers. So that was a fantastic way to go to increase the enhance the security at the schools at a critical time. So and like I said, all of those were completed with all the departments that they were basically came in under budget. So it was between it was about 95% of the budget that they used for operations that they had indicated. So again, good control over the expenditure side. So that's kind of the overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. A lot more details in the report, but just from the resident standpoint, the big picture things, you can see that we had a pretty good year as far as providing services, maintained the expenditures and again, had a limited increase in our property taxes, which again drives all of our operations here. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? I want to thank you for what you do. I mean, keeping track of all that money is a big job and I think the staff needs to be thanked too for what they do to stay under budget and keep those things going. We just try to get the golf course to get 38,000 rounds this year.
There you go. Get them to 37 and break even then at that point. All right, thanks.
All right. Nothing further. Have a motion?
A motion to accept the court fourth quarterly report, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the fourth quarter report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? It's done. Council time. In deference to Councilwoman Garcia, Councilwoman Garcia, I'll let you go first.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm hoping I can we can make it to the whole meeting before I have to leave. Thank you again, everyone, for the presentations by staff. It's always very important. I have just two quick things I want to talk about tonight. So over the years, we've been meeting with homeowners associations in our local residents. It's something that I started a few years ago and HOAs have been really receptive to it. So we've reached out again early this year. So hopefully we've heard back from a few of them already and we're just waiting to hear on scheduling. So as Debbie and I start hearing about dates that they would like us to attend, we'll be sure to share that with all the council members and see which one of us can attend certain meetings on certain days. Of course, if you'd like to go to your own HOA meeting or if you don't want to go to your HOA meeting, we'll figure that one out too. But I appreciate all of the help and the interest in that. So that's helpful. I did go to the MVRPC meeting on February 1st and a couple of things came out of that. First is the transformation transportation and government services priority development projects, one of which is going to be the I-675 and Grange Hall interchange. So that was listed as a priority by MVRPC, saying that it would make a significant impact in the region. There were seven projects that are being put up for funding on this one. Only two of them were designated as priorities and this is one of them. So I think that's great for our region. So that was passed by MVRPC and now that will go on to the state and federal level for approval for their funding as well. So we got past the MVRPC piece and now we'll just wait for funding from the government on that. But I was happy to see it listed as a priority and something that MVRPC thought was very important for us. I thought that was great. The other piece we talked about, some fiscal responsibility for the audit for fiscal year 22 on the MVRPC side of things. And I think there has some good procedures in place moving forward for that. But otherwise, that is about it for me tonight.
Thank you very much. Councilman Littler.
I really don't have anything to share with council. I've been out of town, so I'm still a little post Super Bowl tired. I'm looking forward to going to bed tonight. So that's really all I have to share. Thanks though.
Very good. Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. Attended the Beaver Creek Historical Society's meeting at the end of January and it was really kind of neat because they were talking about the archives that they have over in Green County and some of the historical personalities that have been on the landscape here in Beaver Creek and Green County over the last several years. Also attended the first Thursday event, mayor and just had a big crowd over at Harbor Chase. And we got to see that whole robotics team from which was just fantastic to see what they were doing. Also attended the dedication of the new fire engines. We have four fire engines which have been added and of course, it was explained, pretty hefty amounts of money involved, well over a million dollars per engine. And you'll probably see them out on the streets. They've been allocated to the different firehouses and you'll probably see them out moving around. Attended the Beaver Creek Women's League event and they just want to remind everybody and most of you are aware of it, they have their scholarship luncheon coming up here in April and try to encourage people to get a seat, buy a table, whatever you can do to help out that fantastic organization. And I put everybody or at least the clerk provided minutes to this family and children organization. I was appointed to that by the by the council. If you have any questions, let me know anytime, but they meet four times a year and I think council member Garcia knows a whole lot about it. But I'll try to provide the minutes for you and you can read it through if you have any questions. And also I wanted to mention Sunday, the mayor and I had an opportunity to be a part of an interview process. Young people from the Beaver Creek High School, just phenomenal opportunity to for them to be able to talk with us, explain their background, explain what kind of things they have that they want to achieve in life. And it was it was an interesting hour. Lastly, a couple of things. Number one, the Vietnam veterans are going to have a big program March the 30th at the VFW. And that's they're supposed to be sending out notices to people that stop by and have a hot dog or hamburger with the VFW veterans at their location. And then we also have a Valentine's Day party Wednesday at the Senior Citizen Center starting at 1 o'clock, 1 to 3. And it's always an annual event that if you have an opportunity to stop by, why do that? That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Schwartz.
I thought it was going to you, Glenn.
Keep us guessing.
Keep you guessing.
I have unexpectedly been out of town for the past two weeks and so I don't have a ton of updates. During the next meeting, I will have an update from the Region 14 Board meeting as well as the Fourth of July Committee. So looking forward to that. But I do have the distinct pleasure of announcing anniversaries. So our February anniversaries, we have Tracy Kaufman with police, 25 years. Cynthia Peffley from police, nine years. Brittany McCormick, police, six years. Ryan Stein, police, six years. Joseph Backer, police, four years. Gary Holcomb, public services, four years. Travis O'Neal, police, two years. Casey McCain, police, two years. Joda Hardens, police, two years. And Danielle Wallison, public services, one year. So congratulations and we look forward to celebrating again in another year. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Doerr.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it seems like it's been a little while now, but we you and I had the opportunity of hosting Cub Scout Pack 74 here.
That was fun.
And it was one of our favorite things to do on council and so to take the questions from the young people as part of the Cub Scout Pack. They asked some wonderful questions about the functioning of the city and just day-to-day life. And the highlight is always is taking the picture in the mayor's chair and that opportunity. But want to thank you, Mayor, for hosting them and for answering their questions and appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by congratulating Joe Ferguson. For those of you who don't know Joe, she is a volunteer at our senior center and she's been volunteering there for several decades. I knew Joe back when I worked for the city in the mid 90s and she was there volunteering. And the city submitted her for a volunteer of the year for the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association and she was selected and won. And so this past week, I was at the Ohio Parks and Recreation Association meeting in Sandusky and her and her family came up. They joined us for the banquet. We had a nice dinner and they brought her up on stage and gave her a really nice plaque for the state volunteer of the year. And she gave a fantastic speech and she ended it with, if you want to live to be 97 like me, join the senior center. And the whole crowd, I mean, there were thousand plus people there, really appreciated that and, you know, she lived the rest of the evening like a rock star up there. She was just shaking hands and so it was fantastic. The rest of the conference was very fruitful. There were sessions I attended on grant fundamentals and park opportunities, facility design that meet our city needs, which is what we're dealing with a lot with Spring House Park, ballot initiative discussions and how to structure those that may meet your citizens' needs, perception of parks and recreation, and then attracting talent is one of the sessions I went to. So it was a good conference. Appreciate your support going to that and congratulations to Joe Ferguson and our amazing Parks and Rec staff. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mayor's time. Again, Councilman Doerr and I did the Cub Scouts. That was a it's always a fun event to do that. I was able to attend a bike building giveaway with Green Bucks. If you ever have the opportunity to do that, please do so. It's an amazing event to watch these people get the bikes, the young kids, special needs kids and veterans, the smiles on their faces when they can get out and pedal and go with their friends is just an amazing thing. I too attended the first Thursday since I hosted it and the robotics team was great. Vince Russo from Air Camp was really good, but watching those residents get out and dance to the disco music was just fun. They were out there, they danced until eight or nine o'clock that night. So it was amazing. Also attended the fire engine dedication at the firehouse number one. Was a ribbon cutting for the IME and Moore store out at the Fairfield Collins Mall. It's a small store, it's between JC Penney and Build-A-Bear, I think it is. And they've got things from Africa that they sell there. I was joined by the Trotwood mayor, Yvette.
Page.
Page, yes, thank you. There's too many names. Yvette Page has joined me for that. So that was that was good. I was invited to attend the promotion ceremony at the Dayton Fire Department and I saw a new lieutenant, a new captain, a new district chief, a new assistant chief and a new chief and three paramedics graduate so and be promoted. So that was kind of fun. I was invited by the district chief, he's a good friend of mine that was promoted there. Councilman Curran and I were also did the hosted the international military officers and their staff here at City Hall. I think it was about 17 or 18 of them. That's a program that Mayor Stone started several years ago with AFIT out there. And the last week they're here, they're here deployed for I think three months to go to AFIT. And then the last week they go around to different organizations. They go to the State House, they come here to learn about city government and then they go next door to learn about the police department and things like that. So that was it was a really good time. City manager Lambert and I attended the Dayton Development Coalition annual meeting at the museum, Wright-Patt Museum. Was well attended. There were hundreds of people there. It was amazing. But Dayton Development Coalition was talking about the amount of money that's being invested in the Dayton area or Miami Valley over the last year and it's over a billion dollars. There's a lot of new Joby Aviation, Sierra Nevada, and just a lot of other different types of organizations that are coming into this area. And then I'll finish it up, the youth council on Sunday, the mock interviews with the kids. I've done that for several years now and it's 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 amazing to talk to these kids. I actually told three or four of them that I would call them back for a second interview if they did so well. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real short tonight, city of Beaver Creek is still hiring, so please check out the full-time, part-time seasonal positions on our website. Just go under beaver creek ohio.gov and click on jobs and it'll help you with those positions. And we are looking for, you know, believe it or not, parks and many seasonal jobs that are coming coming quickly. Speaking of that, summer camp is one of them that we always need to position. So camp information will be released March 1st. These go like hot potatoes. So positions, because everything is limited on the number that we can do. So March 1st, 2024, it'll be released with early bird registration beginning March 15th, 2024. So starting June 3rd, running through July 26th, ages 6 through 13, Monday through Friday, 9:30 to 3:30 are the camps. And Fairbrook Elementary School is where we have partnered with the school to have that. We used to have it at Rotary and Outdoor, but became, you know, lightning storms, storms, all that. So the school is an excellent place to be the base for the summer camp. Just as a reminder, Monday is President's Day. City offices will be closed on the 19th in observance of President's Day. And always as non-emergencies, please call the Beaver Creek Police Department, 426-1225 and always 911 for emergencies. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Now we've reached the point for citizens' comments. If anyone in the audience would like to come forward and say anything, you have three minutes. Just state your name and your address. Seeing none, we will close that portion.
Move to adjourn, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.